Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. My name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. The Zoom chat feature is modified, so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself. No public comments or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight's meeting is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Community Engagement Plan and a 2024 Legislative Update. We will start with a roll call. The following Planning Commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Alves, Moore, and Scootley. The following Planning Commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Corbin and Commissioner Fritsch. With seven Planning Commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Vice Chair Alves.
All right. My name is Jason Alves. I'd like to call the order of the March 26, 2024 Meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the Commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion and second from the Planning Commission to approve the agenda.
I'd make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 The motion passes with seven yes votes.
And prior to tonight, the Commission received the meeting notes from the March 12, 2024 meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes? No? I would entertain a motion and a second from the Planning Commission to adopt the minutes.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do the vote?
Aye.
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 The motion passes with seven yes votes.
The next item is a public comment. Megan, has anyone signed up?
Nope. We have no one from the public on Zoom, and we have no one in the room that has signed up to provide comment.
Perfect. Tonight's first agenda item is a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. I will now turn it over to staff.
Nice job. Thank you.
Mindy, can I have a question?
Absolutely.
It's seldom that we get Mr. Fox to join us. I wondered if he missed his three-minute... If he wanted to talk to us, he didn't.
We asked him if he wanted to speak, and he said he was here to listen tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm just here to listen, please, thank you.
But thank you for checking in. We rarely get members of the public. Always want to make sure they have an opportunity. So, thank you, Mindy Brooks, Senior Long Range Planner. As was just said, tonight is going to be a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. This is about the Community Engagement Plan. We did send you the draft plan on Friday. I'm sorry, it was later than we usually send stuff, but it was fairly short. It's on our webpage for the public to review. No action to take tonight. This is simply letting you know what we're up to and getting your feedback. So if you have any suggestions, we will absolutely take suggestions. Next slide. Just an agenda for this presentation. We'll do some reminders. I'm going to add reminders every single time because we often have new people who show up in a meeting who haven't been involved, so you'll get some repeat in these presentations. And then we'll look at our update schedule. We'll talk about what community engagement is, the past community engagement, and our upcoming opportunities. Next slide. So again, reminders. A comprehensive plan is a 20-year vision that addresses growth and the impacts of growth. It's created in collaboration with the community, which is what we're talking about tonight, our engagement plan. So it is a collaborative approach. And along the way, of course, we must always comply with the Growth Management Act. Next slide. I'm going to always have this slide in most of my presentations because if a member of the public picks this up and they're curious about our planning authority or where the rules are that guide us, so nice little short list. So this is big five. I'm not going to go through them with you, but I will be including this frequently for members of the public. Next slide. Final reminder. These are the elements, and we do call them elements of a comprehensive plan. So when we talk about the land use element, it's a chapter in the plan. These are the topics that are covered: economic development, land use, rural character, housing, transportation, utilities and capital facilities, new climate resiliency, and optional subbury plans, like the Packwood and On-Alaska Subbury Plan. And then I did include a link down there. That's to the current, the 2017. So if anybody's curious and looking at the 2017 comp plan, that is the link down there. Okay, new stuff. So this is the schedule. We've actually been working on this for a while, as you know. We had a joint session with you guys back in September, and we've been doing stuff. But, and I'm going to talk about it, but the official, our official kickoff is next week when we're going to ask the Board of County Commissioners to bless the engagement plan as we move forward, and we're going to be launching a survey, which I will also talk about. So we're going to go all through that. It's now through June is a lot of the visioning. It's working with the community. We've got a lot of meetings coming up, a survey. And then we'll put a draft plan together, and then it's going to be review. So we go back out to the public, and here's the draft plan. What do you guys think? We incorporate all of that into the plan, and then we go into the hearings process. So this is the overarching schedule. There's a lot more detail in this. This is just focused on what the, like, the public-facing side of what they're going to see. Next slide. Okay, so let's talk about what community engagement is. It is not one thing. It is a spectrum of things. So the way I like to look at it is, is this is, this is an ability for the public, the community, to self-determine how they want to engage in this process. So we're going to identify lots of tools and lots of opportunities, and then the members of the community can decide how they want to participate, if it's a lot or a little. So the spectrum is from inform, which is really just educational. That's our website, our e-news, social media, press releases, just keeping you informed. The middle is involved. So this is surveys, interviews, community meetings. So this is an involvement where they have the opportunity to speak, and then there's collaborative. So collaborative are committees, focus groups, workshops. So the previous ones that we did were workshops. They were on the collaborative side. So that's less about just talking with each other and more about shaping what's coming up. Next slide. The goals of our engagement are, first and foremost, making sure that the community's values are represented in the plan. So that is really the number-one thing. It is plural: communities, ownership of multiple. Because we don't have one community in Lewis County. We have many, many communities. And some of them agree with each other, and some of them don't. And we have competing viewpoints and competing values, and that is always challenging, right? Which is part of what you guys struggle with, is we bring you the competing values that we have to deal with. Our aim in this is to hear and understand people and to do our best to find common ground. That's what we're shooting for. We will not be able to accommodate everything everybody wants and desires because there's just, there's too much out there. Second, we hope to educate people about long-range planning. So this step that we're in, this setting of goals, people often overlook it, right? They don't think about it as the, as the place they want to engage. They always think about, like, the development side of things. Oh, there's development on the ground. Engagement needs to occur now, and people need to be involved now because the goals set the stage for development, right? If you don't want certain types of development in certain areas, and you wait till the development permit is happening, tough, because we've already gotten to that point, and the developer has certainty that we've made those decisions. So now is the time for people to engage. So education is actually really important about why people should pay attention and why they should use their voice here. And then the third is providing access to decision-makers. I can't tell you how many times people do not know who their commissioner is on the Board of County Commissioners, and they don't realize that they have access to that person. They can email them. They can call that person, right? And so part of this is helping people understand they have access to you, that they can come and listen, or they can come and provide comments, that they have access to the decision-makers, the elected. So that's another goal of our engagement, is to try and provide an avenue for access. Let's talk a little bit about the roles of everybody, what our roles are. So the community is responsible for engaging and sharing their thoughts. Hopefully, it's working. So the community is responsible for engaging and sharing their thoughts. Our job is to create the opportunities for that, but it is the community's, it is their responsibility to participate, right? I can create all the opportunities in the world, and if people choose not to participate, not my fault, right? So the community is responsible for participating in this process. Staff, we're advisors, right? We're advising you. We're technical experts. We give you information. You guys make recommendations. We're advisory. We're advisory to you, advisory to the Board of County Commissioners. We're also that conduit. So we will do our best to share with you what we're hearing out in the public, right, and get that in front of you as much as possible. Your role, as you know, is to hold public hearings, digest what we're giving you, review it thoroughly, ask really tough questions, like you guys are really good at doing, and then make a recommendation to Board of County Commissioners, and their role is to make the decision, right? So they also hold public hearings, and they make the final decision on it. So those are the roles of people in this process. One of the important things that's on staff is we need to understand who benefits and who is burdened by any decision we're making. Because almost never do we find a win-win. There's almost always someone who benefits and someone who is burdened by a decision that we are making. It is staff's responsibility to make sure that we hear from the community what they think their benefits and burdens are by the choices that are being made, and make sure that we tell that to you guys. So you know the consequences of decisions, right? Because there's always going to be a consequence. There's, there's nothing that's going to be really easy, usually. It is also on us, staff, to seek out those people who aren't traditionally involved, right? So I think we all know the usual suspects who we see all the time, and we recruit to be on Planning Commission or whatever. They're engaged. They're here. They're voicing their opinion. We hear them all the time. There's a huge amount of the population out there who is not engaged. They either don't know what is happening, and so they don't know that they should be engaged, or they're busy. That's usually what I find, is people are very busy, and in some cases, they're flat-out intimidated, right? So it's on staff for us to seek out the people who are not engaged and try and understand why they're not engaged, and see if we can overcome the barrier. Is there some tool that we can provide that's easier, that's less intimidating? It is, as you guys know, horribly intimidating to come testify at that microphone, right? So it, again, these are all staffs to take on and to make sure that we try to overcome as many things as we can so that the public can be involved. Next slide. So and then I'm going to talk about barriers. I know this is small. I'm sorry. I'm going to talk about barriers. So we always identify barriers to participation. I think the biggest barrier is our county's size and the fact that it is intensely remote, right? We're very, very big, and we don't have a lot of transportation options for people. You know, you're driving here if you want to be here. And then you couple that with, a lot of our remote locations have pretty crappy internet. So it isn't necessarily easy for people to hop on Zoom, right? And we'll throw into that, some people, technology is not their thing. This ain't easy for them. I say, "Take an online survey," and they're like, "I don't, I can't. I don't understand what's happening," right? It's, there's these, all these barriers to people easily being able to participate in that, and it's really hard for us to find the different ways to go out. And one example of that is, we want to hold meetings out in public, right, out in the community. Well, a one-hour meeting in Mineral is three hours for me away from my desk, right? Because I got to drive to it, to the meeting, and drive back. Doesn't mean we're not doing it. It's just, it's very time-consuming because of our, our remote area. So we got to find lots of different ways to get people included. Also want to point out that we have people with different levels of disability, right? People who are hard of hearing, people who have sight, are, are, are just capable with sight. We have people who literally physically will have access to, access issues to some of the locations we choose to have meetings. So we need to be aware of those different barriers and trying to make sure that everything works for people at those. And we have a language barrier. So we have a very large population here in Lewis County who are Spanish-speaking, and so we will be providing translation services for a number of our written materials. And that is also a community that we will be trying to engage with, who has not traditionally been involved in the planning side of this work. So we will be working on ways to engage with our Spanish-speaking communities. As you know, we held a bunch of meetings early last fall and winter. This early engagement was about scoping, so it was asking the public to help us scope what your priorities are. We had Adna, no attendance. This is an example of, we can provide it, but it doesn't necessarily need people who attend. Salcom, Mineral, South County, which was near Toledo, and Randall. And then the next slide is just some pictures from those events. We, by the way, any event that has 10 members of the public is a successful event. That's my benchmark for success, because it is hard to get people to meetings. Next slide. What we learned from those scoping were these were the top five priorities. Number one was maintain rural character. So people would like us to encourage development that is right-sized for rural areas, protect resource lands, that's our agriculture and forest lands, and grow resource-based economy. So more forestry, more farming, more ecotourism, and encourage the large-scale commercial and industrial development to be near I-5. The next one was to increase affordable housing options, support development of a diversity of housing types, consider options to reduce the property tax burden on people, and regulate short-term rentals. The next is expand infrastructure and services. So ensure that infrastructures, road, water, electricity, cellular, internet, all those things, and services, police, fire, EMS, schools, are expanded coincident with development, so they're not lagging behind. Transportation. Restore public transit options to East County. Work with the federal government to reduce congestion on I-5. Those were the top things we heard on transportation. Government efficiencies. Continue process improvement related to permitting, increase code enforcement. Particularly, this came up many times, regarded to yards with many dilapidated junk cars and trash. That was heard at every meeting. So, yeah, so these were the top things that we heard at the early meetings. Next slide.
Mindy, I was, when you started reading on that, would you go back? When you started reading Maintain Rural Character, I was not, my brain hadn't caught up. I didn't know that we were on this slide. Would you read what you wrote for Maintain Rural Character?
Yep. Let me take a drink of water. Okay. So the, the way this was explained by the meetings, encourage commercial development that is right-sized for rural areas, protect resource lands, and grow resource-based economy, i.e. forestry, farming, and ecotourism, and encourage large-scale commercial and industrial development near I-5. That's what people, when we talked about what is rural character, that's what people meant. Yeah. Okay, next slide. So this is our what's next. On April 2nd, we are kind of officially launching the, the project. There will be a survey. It's going to go up online. We will promote the heck out of it. So it'll go out on social media. We're doing a presentation at Board of County Commissioners on the 2nd. We're hoping that this will help us further understand priorities for the next 20 years, hoping to get a bit more details out of it. The reserve, results will also be put out, right? So we will share the results of what we hear with you guys, with Board of County Commissioners. Everything will go on our webpage. We are also producing a lot of educational materials that we will be handing out at upcoming meetings. I'm going to go over some meetings in a second, and we are, as I said, providing translation to Spanish for a number of things. Next slide. So here's a list of what's coming up. We're trying to make the rounds to hit as many existing meetings of different interest groups as we possibly can over the next month. So we're here. Tomorrow, I've got the East County Chamber of Commerce, and then the next day, I've got Discover Lewis County Partners Meeting. The second, we're doing our B-O-C-C, sort of launching the survey. The third, I'm going to the Fire Chiefs Meeting. Lee's going to the Farm Bureau Meeting, because we can't be in two places at the same time. The fourth will be at the Centralia, yeah.
Where is the Farm Bureau meeting?
Is it, do we know yet if that one's going to be in Morton? Or I mean, Amosirak, where was that?
I think they're completely, your Director of Community Development, I believe they're continuing to meet at the Salcom Fire District.
The what?
The Salcom Fire District. When I find out, do you want Megan?
No, no, I'm just curious. I, I went to the farm store the other day. My wife and I, they have a sale. So we went in there, and they had a booth out in front, and we stopped and chatted with them.
Yep. Well, we definitely will be there at that meeting. Then on the 4th, Centralia College East, we'll be having a specific talk about climate resiliency. April 17th, we'll be at the Olympia Master Builders Meeting. I do have a date for the next one now. April 30th, we'll be at the Reeler's Lunch and Learn. May 4th, Lee will be at the Packwood Mountain Festival, and then on the 10th, the survey closes. So this is just a round of, of engagement right now, and I am going to pause. I only have one other slide, and it's just contact information. So what I wanted to do here is ask you guys for your input. You know, assuming that you had a chance to read the engagement plan, are there specific approaches that you'd like to see us take? Are there specific meetings you would like to see us attend to give information about this? Because we, we want to make as many rounds as we can, right?
Mindy, at these meetings, are you, are you laying out kind of what the plan is, or are you, and then asking for suggestions?
Depends on how much time I'm given on the agenda. So far, we're getting about five to 10 minutes on agenda, which is fine. So what I'm doing that is, what the heck is a comprehensive plan, and why should you care? That's like the, the quick few seconds. We have a handout that has an explanation and has the link to the survey. And then we will have shortly an FAQ. So these are really, really fast. If anybody wants a, like, they want me on the agenda for 30 minutes, we want to have something bigger, I will absolutely tailor it. The Centralia College East was a specific ask. So they are doing a whole series of talks around climate resiliency, and they reached out to us. So we're doing a specific talk about the new requirement, the climate resiliency element, what it means. And then we are going to do an interactive with, with the people who are attending to talk about their priorities around it. And we'll bring that back to you.
Thank you. Hey, I think you're getting out to a lot of these places. I want to ask, I guess, maybe piggyback on that question. Isn't the plan right now to get survey results, not really tell people what's happening?
Yeah.
Get survey results?
Right now is, what are your guys' priorities? What should we be focused on? You know, it's, it's that question of, what are you concerned about with growth that's coming? What are you worried about that we should be paying attention to, and what are you excited about? What are the opportunities that you see, right? So those are the kind of things that we talk with people about, because we are still in that phase of making sure that when we put the plan together, it reflects those community priorities. We'll have a draft plan in June, and then in July, we will go back out with that and be like, hey, what do you think? And get people to react to it.
So the May 10th, what does it say in there? Survey?
The survey closes. So the survey's going to be open for six weeks. And then we need to close it so we can get everything into the draft plan that we want to put out in June. So.
The reason that I asked about that is I've asked a handful of people, so told them briefly what's going on, and, you know, well, what do you? And they're all people that are very active in, in all, but it's like, if you say, well, what would you like to happen in the county? You know, in the next, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, hmm.
Yeah. So whenever I do a survey.
I don't like the traffic on the high five.
Nobody likes traffic on iPhone. Whenever we do a survey, whenever we put a survey out, it will not be an open-ended question because I can't report the results out to you from an open-ended question. So it's going to be, every question will have multiple choice, based largely on just what I've heard over the past number of years being out in the community, right? It will have an open-ended other. If I didn't capture your thing, absolutely, you can click other and tell me your thing. I don't know everything, thankfully. There's people who can, who know more than me. I appreciate that. But we will always go multiple choice. That way, we can say to you, like, 300 people took the survey, and 50% of them say maintained rural culture or real rural character is the 100% most important thing. Okay. Right? Like, we want to be able to present that level of results, and then the people who said other, here's the stuff that came up and give you a sense of that. So, yeah, it won't be, what do you, what do you, you know, those kind of questions I only ask in person when I'm able to really drive the conversation. Okay. Yeah. Which takes, I need at least an hour with people to do that.
I was going to say, it would take, it would take some conversation, and throughout the conversation, people would say, yeah, that's right. I, you know, when I say affordable housing, what I mean is.
Exactly. Yeah. There's like, there's the quick version, which we're doing with most of these, which just is, what is the plan? Why should you care? Take the survey.
Okay.
There's like a 30-minute version, which I'm happy to do, which is much more detailed about what the heck this thing is and where should you care, but still take the survey. And then if there's anybody out there who would like the big thing, which is what we did at those early meetings, the full, like, let's talk through this, you know, that's at least an hour, hour and a half would be better, to really get into the nitty-gritty of things. But that takes up much more of people's agenda, and most of these are standing meetings where people can give me quick. If you can't think of anything now, but something pops in your head, and you're like, boy, you should reach out to this group, or, you know, there's this, this meeting happening, and it can be anything. We've picked, you know, very representative of very specific issues here, which are all important issues. I mean, shoot, I go to homeowners association meetings. We don't have a lot of those in the county. I'm not responsible for the cities, but we do have some of those. Happy to go to those. Want me to come talk to your church group? Yay, I'm in. Like, I'll talk, I'll talk to any group of people who have a standing meeting that we can come talk to. It's just much harder to get a foot in the door on those different groups, so.
Ask the follow-up question. May 10th, surveys close, but when are the survey results? Be something that we can put to the newspaper and parade-o chart, a histogram of.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that the results get on the webpage, out to you, out to the public. We'll share as much as we can, yeah.
Cindy?
Yes.
This is Frank. Could you do me a favor, please, and send me a copy of that slide on the screen right now, listing the meetings?
I'd love you to send it out.
I've got three or four that are swirling around in my head that I'm going to see if I can.
Yep, that sounds great. I can definitely send out this, this list to everybody, and if you have other ideas, let me know.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
And then, oh, how do you feel about, you know, some of us attending some of the meetings? So I would like to attend those climate change meetings as well.
Frank, you're cutting in and out a little bit. I didn't catch that last part.
Oh, sorry. I'd like to attend the climate change meetings, and there was another one or two things that I want to do. So how do you feel about planning conditions?
Yeah, a lot of these, I mean, even though a lot of these meetings are specific entities, many of them, you know, people are definitely welcome to attend. It's not like they're closed door necessarily, so. One of the things that's kind of hard about our timing is many of the big community events that we'd love to table at are after we have the draft. We fully intend on going to those with the draft and getting people's reaction to it, but they're all after we do this scoping piece. So the only one that's early enough to hit is that Packwood Mountain Festival. But there will be, like, you know, we'll, we'll try and hit a lot of the big ones. Like, I went to the On-Alaska Apple Festival last year when we were scoping for the On-Alaska Subbury Plan. It was great. Got a lot of engagement at our table, so we'll do that.
So my wife and I participated in the city of Centralia survey that they did for the same thing, because we do a lot of stuff within the city. It, it wasn't a bad survey. It was about 36 questions.
Holy cow.
Something like that. There was some that I felt were a little repetitive.
I'm looking at four questions, just to let you know.
And it really drilled into a lot of stuff, though, that I thought was good. Maybe a little too in-depth in some places, but when I was talking to them afterwards, this was probably two weeks after they started it. They said that they had nobody below the age of 50 that had taken the, the survey in two to three weeks.
Yep.
And so is there anything that you guys are going to try to do to try to hit that younger demographic? Because I think. Cause I think that's gonna be the tough one because you have generations that have participated and built the community. And then you have the younger generation that hasn't had to help build the community. And now you're asking for their opinion and they're like, I, I don't know. Why do I need to worry about it?
Yeah, right. Um, yeah, I mean, you're bringing up a really good, uh, thing that I've struggled with my whole career. I think anybody who does engagement struggles with, and that's that 25 to 50, don't participate. And it's not because they don't care. It's because they have lives, right? They're at their kid's soccer game. They're trying to get dinner on the table. They work 50 hours a week. That demographic is so hard to reach, which is, I was saying, we're gonna have four questions? We have four questions. Because one of the ways to make sure that that demographic participates is that they click it on their phone while their kid's changing in the locker room. And they do it in five minutes and they're done, right? And that's it. They've engaged and they're out the door. Other than that, it is intensely hard to hit that group of people. They don't attend these meetings. They can't because they're doing something in their lives right now. So, um, if people have any other ideas about ways other than very short and on your phone, which is how I found that most things work, shorten on your phone. Other than that, um, the only other way that I, I get the, the younger generation are things like the Apple Festival. They're gonna bring their kids to it, right? Or they, or this is, you know, some fun activity that couples are gonna go do. And so if you can capture them at that, um, those festivals can be a good way too, so. Tough, tough demographic. But you're right, like, that's the generation who's gonna get them. Like, they have to, they, they're the next generation that this is theirs, right? And their, their kids, we hope, will be here in this county.
Have you guys thought about going to sporting events? And having a table there?
Yeah, I think we would definitely, uh, hit sporting events. I think we, we have to be very strategic about which ones to hit though, right? Because we'd have to have an audience that's willing to talk to us. They don't need to rush back and watch their kid do whatever. And we, we do want to try and engage mostly a rural community. So then there are very rural school districts, like White Pass is a rural school district. There's, doesn't serve any city, right? So there might be opportunity there. I'd love to work better with schools and figure out how to get them. So if you have any specific suggestions, I'll take them.
Yeah, I don't have any good ideas, just was curious.
I know.
If you, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there, it's, it's like the thing of like, well, do you set up a booth at a grocery store where people are coming and going? Well, my experience at a grocery store is people are in a hurry and they're unlikely to probably stop, right? So you get some people who stop, who stop at the feed store. Some people do, it's lovely. But most people, it's like, yay, I'm glad you're doing it, but I can't, I can't pause.
I, I'm over 50, so.
Yes, you're the demographic that's engaged. So it's always, there's always this push-pull of how much time do we want to put staff at something that we're gonna get the engagement from the right community? But I am absolutely willing, if there's a, like a, you know, big sporting event where we expect a lot of rural people at it and maybe it's multiple. I mean, I'm thinking about like my, when my daughter did state swimming, I sat and did nothing for a very long time between her swims. I would have absolutely visited a booth.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking of is tournaments where people are there all day long. And it's a bunch of different places.
Have you tried mailers?
Mailers are very expensive.
And you got no money?
We don't have much money, no. Our budget's very small. Um, instead of.
Would never respond to a mailer.
Yeah, mailers are.
I, yeah, I, yeah, I would never do that.
You know, not responding to a mailer brings up the discussion, really sort of opens it up to, at what responsibility do we have to notify, educate and share information? And, um, because I say this because, you know, I have this interest in critical areas. And I'm sure if you ask nine or 10 people, what do you think about critical areas? Chances are it negatively impacted them. It didn't, you know, do something nice, right? So I'm just telling you that if we went to the public and 100% of the public came back and said, critical areas weren't important. I don't care what they say. I'm, I care that they're important and there's a law, right? So if we don't deliver it right, that then we can set up false things where 90% of the people say, we told you, we didn't care about that and you still worked at it. So anyway, I think you're doing a really nice job.
You bring up a good point. There is a danger sometimes of setting up. We want to make sure that we set up expectations that are realistic. Because as I always say in every presentation, we must comply with state law. And there are things that I hear from the public that they don't want us to do. And I'm like, I'm really, really sorry, but I have to. I don't have a choice. I hear that you don't like it. Tough. I can't not comply with the state law. So we do have to be careful expectations. I was gonna say back on the mailer thing, one of the things that we've done in the past, which I think we'll do here with the survey, is put paper copies at libraries and let people know that they're there. So we did this, um, out in Packwood, cause Packwood has crappy internet. And we put out this online survey and people are like, I, I don't even have internet service at my house that I can rely on to take your online survey. So we put paper copies, um, at the library and we did get some of them back. The difficulty with all of those is like, people have to do it. They gotta put it in an envelope. They gotta mail it back to, I mean, there's a, there's an impediment. So there's always this question of like, how much do we, how much do we do and what are we gonna get back?
And those are people that are motivated.
They are.
So you're, you're probably not getting a real, true, honest representation.
No. Um, but I, but I do think dropping off surveys at libraries is, at the, particularly the remote libraries is a good way to go. Because, because we know the internet is not as well, you know, not as good out there, so. Probably do that. Yeah.
Just, just put it on Facebook, we'll be there.
So Lee Napier again, Director of Community Development. So I've been at this a long time and watched over the years how we, how we've evolved in outreach. So when I started in the beginning, it was you send people things. And then when they don't reply back, you know, oh, well, you let them know. But the reality is, how many of us have time to respond to a postcard? What I've found more successful and what I admire about staff is when they show up. When they show up at places like where Mindy has listed, when they show up to have a conversation with you. And I think it gets to what Bob has said. It's like having a conversation with them about what is or isn't important. And what Mindy has added to about what we can and can't do. This is a big project. This is a, what are we calling it? Lewis County 2045? That's, we're not gonna get there overnight. And so if through this process, we can slowly move the dial and engage people, then I think that is success. Too often, people will say, send out a survey, what was your return results? Oh, it's 5%. You weren't successful. But try to measure things that are successful. I mean, I think all of you, how did you guys get here? You were engaged in a community process in which you, you know, this meant something to you. And so if we can expand from seven, you know, doubling the numbers. So I, I hope that you guys can be patient with that and understand that we're gonna slowly move the dial and have conversations. We'll certainly take in your input, try to expand that, but be okay with if we can incrementally reach people and get feedback. Look at that as being successful. Because I bet when Centralia asked the questions, all of those questions, you know, how many people just got overwhelmed and said, forget that? Not everybody is, is, you know, thoughtful and, you know, not gonna stop as Roger.
Yeah, 36 is a lot. Um, yeah, I, I completely agree. I echo that the meeting people in person, where they are, is gonna be the best way for us to get engagement, meaningful engagement. So the survey will be great. We'll get a big snapshot, hopefully, you know, my, I said 300 because that's my goal, is that we get 300 of those back. Which is a minuscule amount of our total population, but still that's a successful, uh, survey. But the creative ideas about maybe there's a tournament we can hit or, you know, maybe, you know, there's a group that Frank's thinking about that he, that he thinks I should go to, so we can get that a little more one-on-one is gonna be meaningful.
Is the local paper helping out covering some of this?
Yes, they always help out. I, I actually am so impressed with our, with the Chronicle, coming from a different jurisdiction where media was often seen as the enemy. We tried to avoid them. The Chronicle is really helpful. They ran a great article, um, on Saturday, which from our press release about this. So that article is in the paper. They, they do a very good job covering our stuff. Our local, let's talk about it. Todd Chapit has had me on twice. Probably get back on there too, hit the local radio. So, um, yeah, the, the traditional media outlets have been really great. And I just, I'll keep using that for all it's worth. Yeah. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on. If you guys think of anything else, even if it's off the wall, shoot it my way and we'll see if it's something that we can work into the schedule. Like I said, the next six weeks are a big push. Because we, um, we want to get, we want to get as much as we can before we produce the report, the, the draft plan. And then, um, and then there'll be another push, but this is a big one, so. Okay.
One, one side question?
Yeah.
Did the commissioners, um, vote on, uh, the rural?
Oh, no, we're not close to that yet. No, there's a number of steps before we get to that, yeah. Let me just plow into my next item here.
Just go ahead.
Just go.
Do you need me to read it?
I don't.
Okay.
I'll plow ahead. Um, okay, so the next agenda item is, um, the end of legislative session here. Let me scroll down to my notes. So this is a great report. It, they came out yesterday, so we didn't send it to you yet. We will send it to you on Friday with your regular material, so you can peruse this. This is WASAC's, uh, end of session report, which is really, really good. There's a ton in it. I'm not gonna go everything that's in it. There's a lot of stuff that's important to the county, but it is not land use related, doesn't impact the work we do here, so not gonna go over it. We will send it out. I do encourage you to, to read it, though. It's, um, a well-done report to give you a sense of what passed, what failed. I'm just gonna hit the, the land use ones, and there are a lot. So we will scroll to page eight. So you don't have to read this. I am going to speak through the ones that are important here. Stop me if you want any more details. If I have details, I'll provide it. If I don't, I'll say next time, so, okay. House Bill 2116, the ADU bill, surprise, surprise, it failed again. So we'll keep, we'll keep at that one. Maybe someday we'll get it. Uh, Senate Bill 5334, this allows, would have allowed, um, taxes on short-term rentals for affordable housing. It failed. House Bill 1998, uh, allowed co-living in zones that allow multifamily housing passed. This is an affordable housing thing. We actually already allow it, but we'll make a few tweaks to it. Senate Bill 6173, expanded eligible use of the local, uh, option tax for affordable housing. That one passed. House Bill 1987 clarified that 0.09 funding can be used for affordable workforce housing. That one passed. House Bill 2664, to allow mobile home parks, new mobile home parks outside of UGAs failed. We'll scooch onto nine, page nine. Uh, so page nine, Senate Bill 6120, which is the wooey fix, the wildland, uh, wildland urban interface. We requested, the county's requested to fix, the fix passed. We can get into that later if you want to, but yay. House Bill 2113, extends the end of periodic update by six months, but not the funding. So the fact that it passed really doesn't help us, which is why I have not touted this as a big win. So even though we get six more months to do our periodic update, the funding doesn't travel with it. So we are still going to try and finish with our funding. So it doesn't really help. Um, bummer. Uh, let's see here, where did, where did I leave off? House Bill 2296 allows UGA swaps annually passed, but we already allow it. House Bill 2070 changes to SEPA checklist, that one failed. We're glad it failed. What else is on the list that I've missed? Uh, 6140, this is the one that I've been pushing, allows larger retail and lammers. That one passed. So that's a smattering of the land use related. Back on the other page.
Thank you. That House Bill 2126 says it would have authorized ADUs outside the UGAs. I thought I could put a, uh, an ADU on my property in the county.
You can in Lewis County. We, uh, when we changed our, our laws.
Right.
No one appealed us. Yay, a few other counties also changed their laws and no one appealed them. Recently, in the past few years, any county that wants to allow detached ADUs in the rural areas has been challenged by Futurize and they have lost. So for a number of years, WASAC, in support of the counties, has tried to get a law passed to make it legal for everyone to do detached ADUs. But, but the statute of limitations in our law is gone. So our law is fine. Nobody appealed it. It stands.
It's amazing how my questions oftentimes relate to me, isn't it? Thank you.
Well, you know, it's what's on your brain, but it's a great question. I mean, it's people, it's a reasonable thing to ask, but don't we allow it? Yeah, we do. We think everyone should be able to allow detached ADUs. Cause I don't understand the difference between an attached and a detached in terms of its impact from a land use standpoint. That's all I'm gonna cover. Are there any other questions? I know I just splattered a bunch of things at you guys. We'll send this out. You can read through it. If you have questions, you can call me. If it's not on land use, I likely have no idea, but I will try to get you to the person who does know something about that particular, um, bill and can answer your questions about it, so. And again, WASAC put this together. I think they just do a really good job of summarizing it really nicely for everybody. Okay, that's it.
All right. Commissioners got anything else? Anybody?
Is this the good of the order, sir?
Um, I was gonna ask Mindy, but I can ask us first. Is that, let's do that. Let's, we'll change it up.
If it's the good of the order, I have two things. I would have liked to have been at that meeting that was advertised with the county commissioners next week where they kicked this off. I think it's a great opportunity. I'm sorry, I will not be able to be there. And I will be out of country until the 10th, so I won't be around the next meeting.
The 10th of April?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be back after that.
Okay.
Do you have something else?
I was gonna promise her I would read your materials, though, when I come home. I promise you, I will read them.
You're gonna be interested in what we're sending out for next time, so.
For good of the order, I wanted to mention my, um, next and last trip, I think, that will interfere with planning commission duties will be, uh, the May 28th meeting. We will be out of the country. And probably possibly the 11th, I think it's the 11th also. So unfortunately, there'll be two in a row.
Frank?
But that should be it.
You and I have got to coordinate on our dress.
Oh. Hey, I'm dressed for Minnesota weather. It was very cold and snowing.
I mean, look across here. Flannel. Flannel.
But what's your excuse? It's almost 60 degrees outside.
Um, my good of the order, I wanted to ask about the snacks we provide. Happy, happy, happy to provide the snacks we provide, but I've been noticing lately that not very much of them get eaten, which is fine. You know, I take them to the office tomorrow, but I just wanted to check in and see if this is something that you guys still want us to do? If I should pare back? If I should change up what I'm bringing? You know, is it not really necessary? Just an open-ended question to you guys. And I'm really happy to go any way on it. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to chime in.
I, I don't really, I don't really use them, so anybody who does should chime in. Bob?
Can't eat most of it anymore. So fruit and pretzels, but you don't have to do anything for me. I really like, I eat it if it's there, but you don't have to bring anything.
Frank's, uh, friendship cake was excellent. Let's just put Frank in charge.
It's not emotion? We, we haven't heard from our new guys, though, you know? What do you think?
Uh, I'm, I'm fine either way. I mean, it's late enough in the evening. I don't, you know, it, it wouldn't hurt me either way.
Definitely the bottled water. Yeah.
I will never not bring bottled, bottled water.
That's.
And we always have, so we always have, uh, shelf-stable snacks, which is what I used to bring, which is just chips and granola. And we always have, so we always have, uh, shelf stable snacks, which is what I used to bring, which is just chips and granola bars. Um, because I take those to all the public meetings.
Because when Bob eats them, I can't even hear you talk. He puts the bag right by the microphone.
Can you still eat chips, Bob?
No, that's right.
I'd just like to say, we've become two good friends if he's in that public.
You know, fruit and vegetables are fine with me. I mean, you know, healthy things, but you know, I, I, I'm, I'm okay one way or the other, but it's always nice. I guess I'm a snacker, but you know, don't do it just for me.
How hard are you planning and working us?
I mean, we don't have anything come, upcoming that's been as hard as some of the stuff we've done in the past. So, um, I'm not hearing any overwhelming, please bring us snacks. I'm hearing, and don't forget the water ever, which I agree. Like, if I don't have this, I'm in a sheer panic. Um, would people be okay if we just went back to bringing the shelf stable snacks, which is just chips and granola bars?
Yes. Yes.
Bob can't have the, the, the.
Made pretzels.
Okay. That sounds okay with everybody. Okay. That'll probably save us a few bucks too.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Okay. So the next planning commission meeting will be on April 9th. 2024 and the agenda item will be private road naming and update on the comprehensive plan. Land capacity analysis. Any other items?
Yes.
Can I get it? Oh, man.
Private road naming. Everything tweaks something with me. I, the county, when I wanted to name a road, it was going to be 11 letters. And by gosh, they would not bend. And I was okay with that until I drove home and went to my house and there's a, uh, street with called my own lane. And I did the math and I was just livid trying to figure out why one guy could get 11 letters and I could never get my name. So I guess it's the inconsistency that tweaks me, that the county's got one thing and the city's got another.
Yeah, well, tell the city they need to come into compliance with our rules.
Oh, no, I'm not.
No, no one's going to, no one's going to say that. Yeah. Nope.
Well, if you come April 9th, you'll be able to talk about it.
Flying home.
That's the workshop though. The hearing will be a month later. So you will have an opportunity to share your thoughts.
All right. Do you have a motion to get out of here?
Motion to.
All right.